A young man willing to give it all so that we can have the freedom that we enjoy in our city, in our state, in our country today. And we ask you, Lord, just be with all of the servicemen, their families, and all of our first responders throughout the nation, as they are willing to put their life on the line so that we may have freedom and enjoy what no other country in the world has. We ask, Lord, that you be with us as we deliberate tonight. And we just ask that you continue to bless us in the manner that we have been blessed as we live in this wonderful city of ours. Amen.
Amen.
If you'll join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have announcements of community interest. These are announcements in regard to things that in general the community would be interested in. They're not related to the agenda items tonight.
Thanks, Mayor. Welcome to everybody tonight. I have just one announcement. It seems like I've made it before. The Parks and Recreation Department does these kind of events every week. So we wind up, it sounds like we're repeating ourselves, but actually it's just a continuing part of the program here. We have another movies in the park this Friday. Movies in the park service will continue with a nine o'clock showing Friday night for the arc of Beauty and the Beast, which that's G rated. And this week, it will be at Kerrville Shriner Park, which is a little bit of a change. It's been at Louise Hayes Park for the first two movies that we did this year. We're switching over. Again, it's a free event sponsored this time by the Bosworth Company. Popcorn is free and thanks for a dollar. And since there are two more Friday nights before we meet again, we'll also have two more movies before then. Next Friday, August 2nd, at Kerrville Shriner Park, we have Jurassic World Fallen Kingdom, PG-13, so that might be a little bit more older crowd. And then Friday, August 9th, we're going to go back to Louise Hayes Park and we'll have Ralph Breaks the Internet. So keep those in mind this Friday nights. We've had great attendance so far. We had great attendance at our concerts by the river last week. We had three hundred and, three hundred and fifty people out there.
Wow.
Come on out and see us.
All right, good, good. Do we have other announcements of community interests?
I just think we should say, give a shout out to the Parks and Rec Department for the great work that they do for us. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we come to the visitors' citizens forum. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. City council may not discuss or take action on any item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. And each speaker is limited to four minutes. Do we have anyone signed up?
We do have three citizen speakers. The first one, Ward Jones.
My name is Ward Jones. I live at 2126 Bluff Ridge here in Kerrville. Mr. Mayor, councilpersons, I'm here tonight to announce the formation of a new 501(c)(3) charitable organization here in Kerrville. It's called Hill Country Gala. Its sole function is to raise money, which is fairly appropriate to discuss this evening, for Wounded Warrior Project, and specifically the San Antonio office of Wounded Warrior Project, which services not only San Antonio, but all of the hill country. You have a packet in front of you, which I'm not going to go through entirely. You can read it at your leisure. But this event will be a gala event to take place on November 9th, which is the Saturday of Veterans Day weekend, at the Hill Country Youth Event Center here in Kerrville. It will be a dress-up gala. It will be a sit-down gourmet dinner with all of the trimmings. There will be a band. There'll be the typical auction, wine pulls, et cetera. We're looking to max the amount of money that we can earn to send to the Wounded Warrior Project. We already have our title sponsor, which is Shriner University. They have stepped up and we are already in the process of selling individual tickets and table-sponsored tickets. There's a form here that you can read that delineates all of that information. Wounded Warrior Project is the largest not-for-profit private organization in the United States which treats wounded warriors, most specifically from 9/11 forward, but they do take warriors prior to that. They have physical treatment, emotional and psychological treatment. They help find jobs. They have a huge connection program. You may have seen the bike ride on President Bush's ranch every year. That's a Wounded Warrior Project bike ride. And there are many other programs. One of the most impressive things about the organization is that since its formation in 2003, it has actually spent 1.1 billion dollars in treatment for wounded warriors. The wounded warrior spends absolutely nothing, nor does the family spend anything, in access to these various programs. It's all paid for by the organization. So we think it's a very worthy cause. We are looking for your support as a council, as a mayor, and as city employees for this event. And I would be happy to entertain questions at this time or at such time as you would feel free to contact.
We don't do questions in this and this, but you've given us the info and I'm sure there will be some questions and discussion.
Feel free to contact me at any time. I'd be happy to discuss it with each one of you. I do have something I'd like to hand out to each one of you this evening. It's a Wounded Warrior logo pin, which I hope that you will wear from time to time at your choice. The logo is very unique. It's one soldier carrying another. And the whole concept of the Wounded Warrior Project is to get the soldier on the top to be the soldier on the bottom. So, thank you for the opportunity to present this in the evening.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. McManus?
Barbara Burton.
Actually, I would request that you speak at 4I, please.
Okay, so 4...okay.
Mario Garcia.
Please to the mic being here. Evening, council members and mayor. I wanted to kind of just talk about our mindsets. Basically, that we all have one. We all use that to judge and make decisions. And I want us to probably test those, be aware that we have them. And the reason for it is because I was, saw something on there that was really interesting, how most of the history of our country, the economy has been based, as far as government, only 10%. And now it's hitting close to 50% of our entire economy, meaning that it's kind of shoving out the private sector. I think that's important because I was at the workshop and we were talking about the water and the sewer rates going up. And I thought that was interesting because in the pie chart, you know, debt service was 32.5%. We wouldn't be talking about raising water rates or sewer rates if that debt wasn't there. And I think that's important because you've got to understand that goes back to where I really started, where I was the mindset, that where we're going to. Because I know now, in the near future, we're going to start talking about wanting to probably get some debt for fixing our streets, which we all know we need it. I'm not sure, you know, what is the, I think I'd like to start the debate now, which would be the best way of addressing that. Everybody agree that our streets need more work. But the idea of how we're going to go about doing it, the CO is brought up, and if anybody's not familiar, CO is a certificate obligation. That's where you guys just vote. And that's it. I would really push towards that you actually give the citizens an option to vote on that. And I think I've mentioned it before, the last time, the last time it was put on a ballot for citizens to vote on debt was 1987. 1987 was the last time it was put on a ballot for citizens to vote on debt. I think when we talk about mindsets, that what we're really talking about is whether we believe, does our city government need to fund everything? And do we need to keep, you know, pulling from the funds from, and probably the citizens here for what should be going to? I'm really curious to see where has that been going in the past? You know, Mr. McDaniel actually took this on when he took this position about the conditions of the streets. So it was actually before him that this actually happened. And so he's going to do everything he can to catch us up. But at the same time, how we go about doing it and what is discussion of how we believe the government should do it, our city government should do it? So I'm questioning actually, and I don't know if you're familiar, but certificate obligations were only created by the state of Texas for two reasons. One was to take advantage of a bond rate reduction, so we can kind of save money for the citizens. And the second was for an emergency. That's really, if you go look at, it's a report from the Texas Comptroller's website that says COs were designed for that. But we've been using them ever since, like a credit card, where we just go ahead and we'll just vote, you know, city council just votes. And then we go into that and we go and get the certificate or the bond, and then we pay for whatever we want to pay for. All I'm asking for is that you give the citizens a chance to vote on what we feel is right to go on debt. Because there's much more after this. There's going to be the, you know, we're talking about Aquatic Center, we're talking about the safety complex and everything else. So I think that if, if anything I want to expand is that we consider a mindset and how we project, what is it you really believe? The citizens have a choice? Or you guys think that because you're elected, you'll just go ahead and make the decision? So thank you for this time.
That's all with the citizen speakers.
At this time, excuse me, at this time, we have a couple of presentations to make.
I would like for members of Billy Joe Butler's family, if you would stand and sit up here. And I'd like to read this proclamation. Billy Joe Butler was a citizen of the great city of Kerrville. At the age of 19, Billy Joe Butler served in the Army as a member of Company C, Second Engineer Combat Battalion, Second Infantry Division, engaged in combat operations against the enemy near Gangnam, North Korea. Whereas, on number 28, 1950, his unit's defensive positions were attacked and he was captured by the Chinese People's Volunteer Force. And whereas, following the Korean War, returning American prisoners reported that Butler died in January 1951 at the prisoner-of-war camp in Buchchan, Terragol, North Korea. On March 15, 1954, the United States Army declared Butler deceased as of January 27, 1951. And whereas, on July 27, 2018, North Korea turned over 55 boxes purported to contain the remains of American service members killed during the Korean War. And whereas, after DNA analysis, United States Prisoner of War Missing and Action Accounting Agency announced that Army Corporal Billy Joe Butler of Kerrville, Texas, was accounted for April 29, 2019. And Billy Joe Butler's funeral services will take place on Friday, July 26, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. at the Kerrville Funeral Home, with interment following at the Nichols Cemetery with full military honors. And whereas, it is with sincere appreciation that the city of Kerrville recognizes Billy Joe Butler for his dedication and service to our community and the United States of America. Now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the city of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2019, his Corporal Billy Joe Butler Day.
Thank you very much.
Dale.
Jean Allen, who is funeral director and former councilman, and will be handling the service, would like to say something.
Mayor, council, and those in attendance, the proclamation was absolutely wonderful. It's greatly appreciated on behalf of the family. Need to make a quick announcement, though. Because of the overwhelming, great support that the community that we live in has shown, the unexpected crowd that has grown from a small crowd to now hundreds, many hundreds, we've changed the location of the service from the funeral home to First United Methodist Church, 321 Thompson Drive, still at 10 o'clock. So we'll make note of that change.
Still at 10 o'clock. And then the Nichols Cemetery out on Junction Highway toward Ingram on the left is the, is the...
And if there's anyone in attendance that wants to participate in the homecoming tomorrow, we should arrive back in Kerrville somewhere between 1:00 and 1:30. We'll be coming down Sidney Baker to Junction Highway and then back out to the funeral.
1:00 or 1:30?
Between 1:00 and 1:30.
1:00 and 1:30, okay. All right, all right. You know, I want you to think about this just a minute. Billy Joe Butler was a young man.
Eighteen.
He was actually seventeen.
Was he, he was seventeen?
He had to get his parents' permission.
He got his parents' permission.
He had to have them sign to go into the Army. They weren't happy about it, but they did give him.
Wow, wow. It's just, you know, the sacrifices.
Mayor, would you introduce, let them introduce their relationship?
Well, this is the oldest sibling, and, you know, it's really, I think it's amazing that all of the siblings are still living. My mother is going to be 94 this year. She's the eldest of the bunch. And then next was his brother, Maren. Maren's not able to get here. After that is James, well, after that was Billy. And then James Ezra, he will be down here Thursday. They live up in Axton. Then next, now Mom, correct me if I get this mixed up here, but after James, then came Namon, Namon Lee, and he may or may not be able to make it to the services. And then after Namon was Charlene, the youngest, and she will be at the services. She now lives over at Vander and the nursing home.
Family of seven?
It was, what, six, right? Mom, Maren.
Okay. Well, I see what, yeah. Yeah, who else? Your kinship is...
He's my husband.
Okay, all right.
I'm the daughter of Ellen. This is my daughter, Becky, Rebecca, her husband Dan.
My name is Stella Hyde. I'm a niece to Joanne.
James is wife.
Okay.
James is my grandpa.
James, okay.
Okay, all right.
Anyway.
Thank you very much.
Everybody hopefully will be gathering for the services. We're just, you know, it's, we're the local bunch, I guess.
Yeah.
So, but we expect probably around 60 family members. So, we were just, I mean, actually, I don't think we were even thinking about billing when the Army contacted the fellow citizens who remained, Billy, been returned.
Been that long?
It's been, well, since, what, 1953, 1954, so...
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
10 o'clock at First Methodist. I'm coming tomorrow down Sidney Baker.
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank all of you.
Yes, thank you for being here, too.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I've got another proclamation here. This is Daryl Beecham. And he is the director of an outstanding museum here in our community, Museum of Western Art. And I'm just going to say just this, what they have on display is amazing, but what they have in addition to that is phenomenal. And so we're looking forward to...
There's a lot of exciting things on the right.
A lot of special days and showings. All right, whereas, National Day of the Cowboy is celebrated annually on the fourth Saturday in July to honor America's cowboy culture and pioneer heritage. And whereas, the era of the cowboy began after the Civil War in the heart of Texas, cattle were herded long before this time, but in Texas, they grew wild and unchecked. And whereas, as the country expanded to demand for beef in the northern territories and states increased, with nearly five million head of cattle, cowboys moved the herds on long drives to where the profits were. And whereas, the draw of riches and adventure mixed with tales of violence and a backdrop of the Great Plains gave way to the mythological image of the cowboy. And whereas, currently, 14 states, including Texas, have passed into law the National Day of the Cowboy. And on Saturday, July 27, the Museum of Western Art will offer the public a free day of Western-themed activities geared for all ages. Now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the city of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim Saturday, July 27, as National Day of the Cowboy. Now, tell us what the activities at the museum Saturday, basically in hours.
10 to 5. We normally open 10 to 4, but 10 to 5, we're going to be doing everything from cowboy stories to roping, line dancing, the shodish. If you want to learn how to square dance, we can do that as well. There's just a wide variety of things, and there'll be a bunch of additional cowboy art, theme art out on, on display. So, a full day.
Good.
Hope everybody will come join us.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You want to get a abscess here? Yeah.
I should say yee-haw for that.
Now we come to the consent agenda, and these items will be voted on collectively unless a council member or a citizen asks for one of them to be pulled.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to have all of these voted at the same time, but I would like to ask, if I could, to, from the progress report for development services, 4G, I was wondering, excuse me, if someone from that department might want to give us a highlight of some of the things, because you guys have been busy over there with implementing this.
You should probably pull it if we're going to do that.
Pull it? Okay, all right then. We'll pull...
All right, then we'll pull 4G. Barbara, if you want to speak to 4I, we need to pull that. Okay, at the request, Barbara Burton, we'll pull 4I, okay? All right, is there a motion in regard to the rest of the consent agenda with 4G and 4I pulled out?
I'll move that we accept the rest of the agenda with the exception of 4G and 4I as, make a motion to accept them.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, we've got a motion second, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion carries, 4O. Okay, let's deal first with 4G.
Good evening. So some of the things you asked, or some of the highlights that I can talk about very quickly. Well, one of the ones I want to talk about is the inspection process. That is a process that we were coming to a close here very quickly on, and we last reviewed the procedure yesterday, to make sure it's all, it's good and what we needed to be. But the thing I want to highlight from there is that that process also allows now the inspector to actually do the inspections on-site. So before, what would end up happening is they would mark it down on a piece of paper, they'd have to come back to the office, from the office, go through the process of then uploading it into InCode, and then from there, the permit was issued out because the inspections were completed, or let the customer know that they had failed. Well, now, the inspector just goes with his iPad, checks off as he's going through the process of inspecting the process, and then when he's done, hits a button, emails the customer, and lets the customer know right then and there whether they passed or they failed. So that's one of the big things. And then from a code compliance standpoint, we were able to reduce the hours, hours worked per case from 4.4, 4.5 hours to one and a half hours per case. And that's all being done through a mobile office in the truck, also utilizing the iPad that they have. And so every time they go out to a case, they can fill out everything, send it right then and there, versus before, going through the process and coming back to the office and then doing all that work. So cut out a lot of steps from there. So those are just two big ones that I can think of right off the top that we have improved at the department itself. There's some other things on there, but very quickly, just answer your question.
Good stuff.
Yeah, it's good.
Thank you.
I have a question if no one else knows. So I noticed on the survey or your report about how many people actually come in that you've helped at the kiosk, and it was a very small number, and I just wondered, are they just technologically advanced now? They just, they took your training classes and...
Yeah, well, that particular survey was done when we had the, the online training for the customers to use the customer photo site.
Oh, okay.
And so those are the ones that filled out that portion. But we do help a large number of our customers that come in and use the kiosk.
Okay, so they are coming in and you're able to help them one-on-one?
Yes.
Good, good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Okay, 4I, Barbara?
Um, we need to go ahead...
Need a motion and a...
Oh, to approve G. I'll make a motion that we approve 4G of the consent item, consent item, agenda.
Okay, all right.
I'll second it.
Yeah, you can second it.
Easy for me to say, right?
Okay, all in favor, raise a hand, okay? All right, 4I.
Barbara Burton, 235 Guadalupe Street. 4I has to do with the minutes from the July 9th city council meeting. I was unable to attend. I generally have appointments scheduled for the evenings, but I canceled for this evening. Anyway, it has to do with the 5B Resolution 23-2019, which is to finance street drainage improvements for the city of Kerrville. I'm a graduate in leadership, Kerr County, class of 1994, and subsequently sat on the steering committee for five years. In 94, all the talk of the town, for those of you that weren't here, was about 4B sales tax. Being involved in leadership at Kerr County and then on the steering committee, I'm extremely well-versed on the subject of 4B sales tax. The city and the chamber over the last many years have referred to the 4B sales tax strictly as economic development, and many, many, many times, I've gone up to the microphone and said, you know, that was actually voted in for infrastructure improvement. And there's never been any discussion of it. So I finally went ahead and did a FOIA of Freedom of Information Act and pulled the ballot for the 1995 election. On that ballot, I had forgotten about it, but on that ballot in 95 was a whole, another page and a half of the projects that were going to be addressed with 4B sales tax. And I've just highlighted a couple of them. One is the improvements to Jefferson Street, improvements to North Street, new street construction along the old railroad right away, water and sewer, sewer service, water and system improvements, water system improvement on the west side, including Methodist Encampment, sewer lift station, other street and storm drainage projects as determined necessary, and maintenance costs for the projects included in this list. So my confusion and my concern is that we're getting ready to be saddled with $10,500,000 worth of debt for something that has already been voted in in 1995. The citizens of this community voted in the absent sales tax for the purposes of infrastructure improvement, streets, drainage, all of that. So in my mind, this $10,500,000 on top of the EIC money, EIC overlooks the expenditure of absent sales tax, seems to me like double-dipping, and it just doesn't seem right. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention, for those of you that weren't here 25 years ago. Here's the ballot. I have it in my hand. If somebody wants to look at it, I'd be happy to share it with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, can I address the city manager as far as, was there an amendment or something that changed the purpose of the infrastructure, the purposes of the funds for infrastructure or 25 years ago?
State law governs the use of the absent sales tax, 4B in this case. Barbara's... What Barbara's referring to is a, an attachment that was to the ballot as an educational piece about things that might be funded. One of them, for example, maintenance cannot be funded with four Bs of sales tax. So it's not a ballot that she was referring to, it was attached to the ballot as an educational piece. And then with regard to the ten and a half million, the idea is that we would issue the COs without a tax increase because we're paying off older debt. So, uh, that's how cities manage their debt portfolios. We have very low tax-supported debt, um, one of the lowest in, for a city our size. We do have other types of debt, but when it comes to geo-debt, general obligation debt, uh, it's very low. And I think that when you all looked at the survey, you looked at the needs, the citizens said, yes, we would support, um, streets and drainage and to the tune of eighty to ninety percent, I think, in some cases, uh, the residents would support that if there were no tax increase. Then that's, that's why we're proceeding the way that we are. Uh, in addition to that, if we were to delay and, and have a bond election, say in November or, or later, that just puts us even further behind in terms of trying to play catch-up on streets and drainage. So that's why we took the approach that we did.
Thank you.
Uh, let me clarify one other thing. The infrastructure and four B sales tax is, is related to economic development? Is that correct?
Three purposes.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Hayes.
Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, say that again.
Okay, the, the, uh, infrastructure item of four B sales tax is related to economic development, is that right?
The, I'm, I'm not following it.
All right, I'm gonna let Mr. Cochran answer.
Well, I, I can, my, my understanding is that the four oh three B sales tax money can be used for three purposes. Economic development, infrastructure.
Tied to business enterprise.
Tied to business enterprise, that's correct.
Right.
And I just went blank on the third one.
Well, it's, it's quality of life, you know, kind of a broad, and, and we've used it for that and, and, and the, the law has certainly changed since the ballot twenty-five years ago. We, we built a, a fire station, as I recall, we could no longer do that. We used to put streets in, in residential neighborhoods, we can't do that anymore. So the law has changed over the years.
Has applied to economic...
Tightened it up.
Okay, but the second one that you mentioned, uh, what I was saying was, in, in the four B sales tax money, isn't that, doesn't the infrastructure have to be related somehow to economic development?
Business enterprise, that's the...
Yeah, business enterprise, okay, okay. All right, okay, uh, so the issue before us is, do we accept the minutes, uh, for the city council meeting held July nine, twenty nineteen? Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right. Got a motion second, all in favor, please raise the hand. Okay, thank you. All right, now we come to, uh, the, it's the end of the consent agenda. We go to ordinances, first reading. Ms. McLanahan, if you would read that for us.
Ordinance number twenty nineteen dash sixteen, ordering a special election to be held on November fifth, twenty nineteen for the purpose of submitting propositions to voters for proposed amendments to the city charter, establishing early voting locations and polling places for this election, making provisions for the conduct of the election and providing for public review. And I do have two citizen speakers signed up.
Okay, all right.
Uh, thanks, Mayor, good evening, council. This is a first reading of an ordinance. The ordinance will essentially do two things. It will call special election, uh, for Tuesday, November fifth, and it sets out amendments, uh, as proposed by the Charter Review Commission. I'm just gonna make a brief presentation and then, um, offer to answer any questions you may have. First, I wanna say thanks again to the Charter Review Commission. Some of them are, some of the members are in attendance tonight. I've mentioned this before, but I think it bears repeating. They really took the charge seriously, they were very passionate about it, very purposeful, diligent. At times, they got homework and, uh, in fact, I, you know, when they went off and did their homework, I thought, gosh, I don't know if they've all signed up for this, but they would do their homework and come back and report. They had ten meetings, uh, one of which included a public hearing, one of which included a workshop with you on the sixteenth of this month. Uh, and essentially, it was just a, a joy, uh, to really assist them and really to not get in their way when they, when they were, um, uh, really chewing on some issues. So in drafting the ordinance before you, um, I started with their report as they, um, submitted to you, uh, last week. It's been online, um, since before then as well. Uh, and so all of the proposed ordinances, uh, excuse me, all the proposed amendments to our charter that they've, uh, recommended are in the, uh, current ordinance. Just a reminder from the workshop, um, you, you know, they had a brief presentation to you. You discussed some of those amendments, uh, and then the rationale for some of those as well. So again, the ordinance before you, uh, it does a couple of things. It formally accepts the, their report, it orders the special election on November fifth, uh, which will be held in conjunction with a state election and there are a number of constitutional amendments stemming from the recent, uh, Texas legislative session. Uh, and then it sets out the amendments and I think that bears some explaining as to how the ordinance does that. Uh, it does that first in measures, um, and then I'll note that out of, so out of the, um, forty-three amendments, we've gotten down to nineteen measures, nineteen propositions, which I'll speak about. Uh, so the measures, um, in the ordinance are essentially redline changes showing specific proposed wording changes. And so you'll, you'll see that, um, and it's broader than single amendments. So in other words, um, in that at times, multiple amendments are classified together under a, under a category, if you will, um, or, or under a single measure. The law requires us to do this, though, where there's a single subject matter. And so you'll, you'll notice the first measure, measure A, is, uh, the liquor, um, amendment and that's, that's its own subject and so that's why it's, it's categorized by itself. But again, similar subjects are captured together into broader, uh, categories. Uh, then after the, uh, measures, we get into section four on page nineteen, which are the propositions. And that's gonna be the actual ballot language, um, as we move forward, if you all decide to move forward. Uh, so you'll see a statement there and then you'll see a for and against. And again, these are broad categories, they're not single amendments. Uh, and so I'll, uh, if you'll notice, for instance, proposition B, uh, which is amendments to city charter to provide clarity as to meaning and intent and eliminating inconsistencies. And so that includes several amendments that the Charter Review Commission is proposing and that's kind of a housekeeping measure, uh, 'cause we've not gone through this or a commission has not gone through this charter in five years. Let's see, and so then, um, the, the revisions then that, that I've made actually, uh, since, um, I put the ordinance into the packet, um, I did, uh, provide greater specificity in terms of how the election will be held, uh, Shelley helped me with that. And so since we're, we're, you know, the county is running our election and we're doing it in conjunction with the statewide election, um, there'll be precincts involved and early voting will, um, uh, not be at the, the Calo, but instead it will be at River Hills Mall and the Ingram Annex as part of the, uh, county's facilities. So tonight is the first reading, the second reading, if you choose, again, to move forward, will be August thirteenth. What, once we do that, or i- if you all go through that process and, um, vote to approve it on second reading, uh, all the amendments will continue to be online, um, we'll place them in the city secretary's office at the library. And we'll have to do pursuant to state law, a newspaper notice and so there'll probably be some sort of insert. And, um, as part of that notice, there's also a state law requirement that we talk about the fiscal impact to each, uh, proposition. And I, I've thought about this a couple of times, I don't think there's gonna be any. And if you wanna, uh, get into that a little bit further, but I don't think there's gonna be any fiscal impact to any of these, um, propositions, should they, um, all pass. So that's my presentation and I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Counsel and questions?
No questions, just a comment, I wanna thank the commission again for the work that they did. I think children's work, it excellently done. And, uh, I'm in favor of, you know, I think moving forward on this, just to honor the work that they've done and put this before the citizens and let them make their decisions.
And I ditto that because it's tedious work, really, um, you know, having read it several times myself when I was elected and then after that to just double-check things throughout the, the course of time when things would come up. It's, um, it's a legal reading and it's, um, you've gotta really have your legal hat on and think about all the, uh, ins and outs of all these things that go into the charter. So I, my hats off to all of you who took the time to do that in a concentrated manner. Thank you very much.
I'd say the same thing, they just, they did a yeoman's job. If, if we wanted to make a change, Mike, on, on one of these, uh, is tonight the time to do it? Should we wait till next time, what?
You, you can certainly do that tonight, um, you know, I, I would recommend that you, um, not make any substantive changes next time. So in other words, next time, uh, I wouldn't add anything.
Okay.
But you could certainly decide to take something away, I know that council member...
Okay, okay, then, uh, I'll, I'll wait and, and, um, ask some more questions.
One thing I would say, Mike, with basically this legal document about the ins and outs of city government and categories and subcategories, I think we are probably gonna need to require the police to be there for crowd control on Election Day.
Probably, we'll, we'll make sure.
Like never before.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Well, and I was curious, it says, it, there'll be a touchscreen voting system for this. Is that, will there be enough touchscreens, I mean, for several people at one time?
Yeah, I mean, remember the county covers the national election before here, so, you know, certainly...
Okay.
When there's statewide, um, candidate elections and so I think they're prepared.
It would be, okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, yes, the speakers?
Michael Louise Bond. Michael Louise Bond, uh, my voting address is two-one-three Stephanie, Kerrville, Texas. And I've, I have, I'm not commenting on the charter, I'm simply commenting on the date of the election tonight. So you've already raised some concerns and I'd like to explore those for just a minute or two with you. First of all, my comment is, with these odd-numbered year elections, November nineteen, um, with the proposed amendments to the Texas Constitution, and there are ten this year, uh, they are notorious for low voter turnout. So my question is this, if I understand the ordinance correctly, and I actually have two questions. When I go to vote on Election Day, because I like to vote on Election Day unless I'm working the election, I will need to go to precinct four and vote. And then I will need to go to a different location to vote in the city election. Am I understanding that correctly?
No.
Precinct one votes at the mall on, on Election Day.
Right, I live in four. So when I vote, when I go where precinct four votes, I will not be able to vote on the city charter. I'll have to go to another location.
No, you can't...
Where the city election.
You can vote in the city election.
So every precinct is being staffed...
Yes.
For the city election and for the constitutional amendment.
That's correct.
Okay.
All four, you're welcome, all four locations will be the city election and then all, the two locations for the Calo and the Ingram Annex, you can vote both places there too during early election.
Okay, good. I think I have voted in so many city elections here that I am remembering city elections way in the past where we had to go to two locations to vote. Okay, that's good. Uh, I think my only other comment then is my concern about a low voter turnout. For all of the work that's been done, I would think that, and I know it means waiting six months, but I would think that this would deserve to be voted on when we have a city election this May because three council positions will be up for a vote and I would think you would have a much greater and higher turnout that day. I just felt that it was really unwise to be combining the charter election with the constitutional amendment election. And there are lots of people in Kerrville who work really hard to get out voter turnout, but it's, it's difficult to do, to get a percentage there. Thank you, I appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, if I may, and I did misstate, so the, the early voting, uh, locations are, as, as, um, Ms. Bond or, um, Ms. McElhanan said, uh, one will be at the Calo Municipal Auditorium and the other will be at the, um, West Kerr Annex.
At the where?
West Kerr Annex in Ingram.
Okay, okay, all right, okay. All right, another speaker?
Mario Garcia.
I think it's seven zero one, um, I think the committee two, because I went to two and three of the meetings, um, that they have for charter, tried to get into charter. Mario Garcia, nine thirty-four at the time. And the only thing I have on there was, and this is no, you know, you know, anything to do with my case, but the one where the attorney, I think it's a super majority, um, he was in the meetings, he's highly influential in the meetings, I think it's just a conflict of interest. I don't think it's that he doesn't deserve it, we probably could put in his contract to have that part of the, you know, added, but to be in the charter and being involved in that and that he benefits or probably another attorney behind you benefits that, I think is conflict interest. The only thing I've had so far, uh, I may bring up something second, maybe it's gonna be too late because you're saying bringing something to the second reading when it's finalizing, but that's probably the only thing I have for right now. So I would probably recommend that that be pulled and then added to his contract.
Mayor, can I address that since I was on there?
Yeah, why don't you, Q, come up here.
Mike Sigerman, four downstairs, Comanche Trace Drive. Uh, there were seven members of the Charter Review Committee, of which Mike Hayes was not. Mike Hayes was a counselor in there answering questions, really not giving any advice unless it was legal advice. He had no input whatsoever on that particular, uh, item that Mr. Garcia brought up. Uh, that was something that we all reviewed the city charter. We felt like it was a correction that needed to be made to try to make it more in line with the city manager. So, uh, just to be clear, Mike Hayes did not benefit from that at all, nor did he have any input whatsoever in that. And there are two other people here from the Charter Review Committee and I think they would probably say the same thing. Just so you guys know that.
Yeah, I'll just say it's critical to have the city attorney in on the revision of the charter. Okay, uh, do we have another speaker?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, uh, do I hear a motion in regard to five A?
I'll make a motion that we consider this first reading of the ordinance, which will order a special election for a vote on amendments to the charter.
I'll second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, raise hand. Okay. And now the, uh, we look at the River Trail Master Plan, if you will read that in for us.
Resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty-nineteen approving an amendment to the Kerrville River Trail Master Plan and we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is a resolution adopting an amendment to the River Trail Master Plan. Council most recently adopted this plan by resolution October two thousand eighteen and this resolution would replace and repeal that resolution. Since then, another potential segment has been identified and that's the downtown segment. It's been identified in the Kerrville twenty-fifty action items in relating to enhancing trail connections through points of interest. The downtown segment would connect, um, around the G Street Trailhead area and run along downtown to Riverside Nature Center. The exact route would need to be determined and further evaluated. And of course, it's pursuant, um, to funding and the easement acquisition in the future. This amendment was presented to the Parks Recreation Advisory Board at their June meeting and it was voted unanimously approved. In addition, um, the current Shriners University segment of the trail, we recently received quality and favorable bids and will be bringing that bid award to you in the near future. Staff recommends approval of this resolution as presented and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, okay.
And the proposed amendment is in, um, the blue on your screen.
Okay. Okay, proposed amendment is from G Street to Riverside Nature Center. And the addition we've already authorized is from G Street to Shriners University, ending on that campus of the trail there, okay? Okay, questions or comments?
I think it's exciting.
Mm-hmm. When can we walk down there under the bridge and get a tour?
Okay, hold on just a minute, let's deal with council questions and then we'll see if we have any speakers. All right, anything else, all right, thank you. Do we have a speaker?
Bruce Stricki.
I, I just wanted to remind everybody, um, about the beauty of the River Trail and our river and how after being here not, not nearly as long as Barbara, who's been an advocate for the river for many years, but we, we see the city finally embracing the river, hopefully in a way that's respectful But we, we see the city finally embracing the river, hopefully in a way that's respectful. And, and I know in, in my experience there, and many others, it is, and that it's what a great advantage it is. In fact, I had someone in my vehicle today that's looking at bringing attainable housing here in the Kerrville area. And one of the questions, a really smart young man from Austin, one of the questions he asked me was, why is it that right now Kerrville is so interesting to people? Because I was telling him about other projects that we're working on, whether they were mine or someone else's. And, and the only answer I had was, was things like the River Trail, and the sports complex, and our, our water system. And the, and the, you know, like the workshop this afternoon, where we're talking in advance about how do we do long-term planning on securing our water? And, and making sure that we have enough for the city. And it's that forward thinking that councils before you, and this council is doing, that really takes advantage of this city. And has created a city where we have growth that is modulated. And in fact, that my family came here and picked this place because Ernie was too hot. We didn't want to move to another bedroom community, we wanted to move someplace that would grow sustainably and carefully and over time. And, and, you know, now that I've been here for twelve years, in hindsight, I, I think we did a good job with that. We look at the real estate market back in two thousand and five, when it peaked in volume, and the average price peaked in two thousand and eight. And, and it, prices went down, and the volume went down, but nothing like it did in Round Rock, and San Antonio, and Georgetown and stuff. And that's because of the careful counsel, and the, and the idea to look forward of how do we do things like ASR wells? How do we do things like long-term water quality? How do we do things like a River Trail and quality of life, and the parts that we have that, you know, that started with, you know, a group that got together and built a park in a day, I understand. And those are the kinds of things that you all are doing to really make this city a great thing. And with that, I'll, I'll wave my minute and twenty seconds to Barbara.
Oh, okay. Barbara, are you signed up for this item?
No, sir.
Okay, then I would say afterwards, council members and staff will be around, and we'll visit, okay? All right, okay. All in favor of this River Trail?
Do we have a motion?
Oh, do we need a motion?
I think to approve the resolution, we do.
Oh, okay.
I think we do.
Do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion, Mayor, but before I make the motion, I'd like to tell a, a story about the River Trail. Some friends recently, their dog had cancer, they knew that the time had come, they had to put her down. But the last thing they did, she loved, loved to walk on the River Trail, so the last thing they did before they had her put to sleep was take her for a walk on the River Trail. So, it, it affects even our animals. So, I would move that we approve resolution number, resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty nineteen to approve the River Trail Master Plan.
Second.
The amendment.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand, okay. Now, let's look at six B, Ms. McElhanen.
Construction contract with Intermountain Slurry Seal Incorporated for the twenty nineteen Slurry Seal project in an amount of three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and eight dollar and fifty-five cent.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm going to give you a brief overview real quick before we get into the details of the exact contract. Probably heard this a number of times in our workshop. Just bold statement here, the goal of pavement management is to apply the right treatment to the right pavement at the right time. And so that's, we're, we're talking about that continuously with Public Works, and getting the city and citizens the right treatment, and most cost-effective treatment. We did have some leftover funding in this year, so that's why we're coming back to you again today. Came back in, in March to get the preliminary contract, and now we're doing it in addition. So, just to give you an idea where we're at on Slurry Seal, it, it's in addition to crack seal, it's one of the maintenance routines. It's not the rehab, it's not the reconstruction. It's one of our maintenance items to get the street to last longer, prevent water infiltration, stuff like that. So, this is, aside from the workshop that you probably saw, forty-nine miles of current streets are allocated for Slurry Seal. That's forty-nine lane miles. So, that's out of the two hundred and seventy-seven total that we have in the city. If you look at that, the orange on the top and bottom, so what we're looking at now is as most cost-effective, what benefits us, what affects most citizens. This is, for the allocation of money, this is the most effective use. These are the streets that we've got. We've got the street list on there right, I know it's very small, but just to give you an overview of stuff that we've talked about in, in the workshop. We're spreading the contractors out, and we're, with the new plan, we're looking to centralize that a little bit more. These are still the small segments. It's what we, we don't have the new plan adopted yet, we're going back on, on the old plan still. This is the year five Slurry Seal streets. So, that's where, if these aren't full street segments, and this is, you know, the small segments that we continue to have. So, this is what we've got to date, in addition to tonight's contract for, for war. We've got the crack seal and, and design that was completed earlier this year, about sixteen lane miles. We've got the previous contract that I mentioned, roughly six miles of Slurry Seal. And then we have tonight's, a little less than eight and a half miles. With the two Slurry Seal to be done by September thirtieth, that'll get us about fifteen lane miles of Slurry Seal this year, and maintenance of a little over thirty. So, that's, that's our, our goal. And so, as far as the actual topic of the discussion here, we have a contract that let, and we accepted bids on July twelfth. We had one contract with the same contractor, they gave us fair, fair price, send unit bid. You know, we only have two in the entire state of Texas that can bid on our projects, which we're trying to attract more, but only two in the state of Texas. The other one's tied up, we were fortunate to get this one, so we're bringing this to you tonight for the contract with Intermountain.
Okay, I know chip seal and crack seal, tell us what Slurry Seal is.
So, Slurry Seal is the one where you see the truck, and behind it looks like a brand-new road on top of it. It, it's a very thin film of aggregate and emulsions that gets laid out, we close the streets for about four to six hours. And that's what they do, is just seal that, that street, you know, the full width, once they're done. And, you know, if, if you're ever interested, when they come into town, and looking at that application, we've got videos, we've got other stuff, but if you actually want to see it. You may be more interested to, you know, walk you out there, kind of look at the process of it, it's very quick, and they can hit a street and, you know.
Back to your map, the five-year, yeah. So, are we still just hitting these little short segments?
Until we adopt the, the new, new plan that we just had last month in, in the workshop. We wanted to expedite more maintenance, and we could do reconstruction, but we're going to get a quarter mile of the street.
Why?
What's that?
I mean, why, why, why are we stuck with just small segments? I mean.
Well, that, that's what we're hoping to change in the adopted.
Right. But even with the others, I mean, we can't go to them and say.
Well, and, and that's the only thing that we actually have direction on right now.
Okay.
And so we wanted to make sure to capitalize on the expenses that we budgeted for. We had some cost savings with the crack seal and Slurry Seal, and so we wanted to maximize what we're doing for the citizens, and getting what had already been discussed in, in year five Slurry Seal.
One aspect this doesn't show is that this is the year five Slurry Seal elements. Recall though, that we, you all just awarded the year four piece, which they will be doing essentially at the same time. So, what you're not seeing is the year four, that is also connected to some of these pieces.
Oh, okay.
So, there are actually longer segments that just aren't shown on this year five quarter.
Okay.
So, you are actually getting some economies of scale, which is part of the reason why we're getting eight miles, I think, this time, as opposed to the, just the original.
Okay, good, thank you.
The, we are, we, we did actually receive some economies of scale.
That, it doesn't need to come back before council, but I would like to see that map.
Both of the combined?
With the two of them combined, if that could be done without any great. I've got, I've got quite a few people calling asking, is my road going to get done, what's going to get done? So, if I could see that and have that with me, that would be great.
We do have the, I believe that each month, Public Works Department updates what roads are being done. I think that's on the Public Works website, or is it on the main page? Okay, so that's, if, if anybody's interested.
Okay.
In whether there's.
If I could get that, both of them put together, that would be wonderful, so.
And what's the life expectancy, expectancy of a Slurry Seal street?
I think we estimate about five years. Five to seven.
Maybe five years.
It's all depending on your conditions and the streets and stuff like that. Get drainage off of it.
Thank you, thank you, then. Any, do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, I will entertain a motion on the Slurry Seal paving.
Make a motion, we approve item six B as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion second, all in favor, let me know by the raised hands. Okay, good, all right. And now. Chief Dozier will do the financial presentation.
Appreciate the introduction. I know that y'all are now entering past the three-hour mark on meetings, so I'll try to make this brief. But I do want to give you an update on our finances for the month ended June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. We're going to start with the general fund. And looking at general fund revenues for the month, or actually, year-to-date, we've received revenue of twenty-two point five million. And we're doing well on our biggest categories of property tax and sales tax. In particular, we always talk about sales tax, because it's a really volatile one, but our strong sales tax performance continues. We're up five percent year-to-date compared to the prior year, and it does look like we're going to end the year a little bit better than budget on sales tax. Real close on property tax, so that's all good news. On the expenditure side for the general fund, we're tracking very close to budget, just a little bit better than budget, and no significant variances there. Looking at the water fund, we get into a little bit different story. So, year-to-date through the end of June, the water fund has received revenues of eight point two million compared to expenditures of nine million. And, you know, we've talked a lot about this over the last few months, and especially in our budget workshop. Looking at the revenue side of things in particular, the water and the reuse sales are both significantly lower than budget. Through the end of June, our rainfall totals for this fiscal year compared to last fiscal year, we're three point three times ahead of where we were last fiscal year. And our consumption has really been impacted, and our, our rate structure means that we have a very, we have a variable rate structure. So, when consumption is down, those revenues are significantly down, and that's what we're seeing. Things are picking up a little bit in July, but we are on track to end the year significantly below budget on the water sales. And on the sewer sales, we're also lower than budget there. Our, our projection that we've been showing you for the last few months looks to be holding, but we are looking like we are going to end the year below budget on the sewer sales as well. And that's going to put the entire fund in the red for the year, so we will be dipping down into that fund balance because of the way our sales have been impacted this year. On the expenditure side, a little bit of good news, we are better than budget. We've had lower-than-anticipated chemical and maintenance costs, and we've also had some staffing vacancies that have helped us this year. Looking at the other funds that we talk about, Development Services, so Development Services is now broken out into its own fund. Through the end of June, they've received revenues of eight hundred and seventy-four thousand compared to expenditures of nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Those revenues are looking a little bit below budget, but it is very difficult to predict how revenues are going to come in on the Development Services Fund. And there are some significant projects that have not hit yet, but are due to start hitting any time with some permitting and plan review fees. So, we do expect that number to come close to budget by the end of the year. The Golf Fund is the next one down the line there. The Golf Fund, year-to-date, has received revenues of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand compared to expenditures of six hundred and eighty-nine thousand. As we've been talking about for the past few months, they've been impacted significantly by the weather this year as well, and we've talked about some ideas to change some things to try to help them next year in our budget workshop. And the Hotel Occupancy Fund is the last one there. And so, year-to-date, through the end of June, Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund has received revenues of one million compared to expenditures of eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand. We continue to see strong performance there. And then finally, our real estate update, thanks to Mr. Stricki for providing this information. So, we have the same information that we had last month, just updated for another month. But that home sales by price range graph, I think continues to be interesting to show where most of the home sales are occurring, which price range, that two hundred to two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar range. And you can see that compared to the prior fiscal year, our home prices are up a little bit, which is not a surprise. Our days on the market down a little bit, and our volume sold is about flat. We also received some information just for the month of June alone, and I have some bullet points over on the right that show that. So, there were some declines, if you just look at June compared to June, but, you know, certainly one month shouldn't be looked at too closely, you know, in comparison. So, that, that's why I put the year-to-date information there as well, and I think that's probably more meaningful. But a little bit of decline when you look at it on a June-to-June basis. And that's everything I have, anyone have questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's supposed to rain tomorrow. No, I'm saying it so it won't happen, okay?
By the way, the, the weather and the rain has affected the income for K-Pub, because when it's cooler in the summer, late spring. And you've got, you know, rain contributes to that, it, it affects the.
We used to be happy about it, now it's.
All right, do we have items for future agendas? Okay, all right. Do you want to call an executive session? Okay, at seven oh seven, we're adjourned.